...clock, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals. I'll tell you how this hearing is going to proceed. First, I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg public access. I'd like to introduce the members. To my left is Lisa Normedin. She's the board secretary. Al Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Paul Doherty, David Blatt, and Pat Callahan. The way the meeting will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communication. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submittal of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. This is a special permit, so there are, when the board goes into deliberations, there are required findings. And the findings are as follows. One, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire explosion, or other reasons. Two, that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or in the amenities of the neighborhood. Three, that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if an open use. And four, that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Donna Carlo, 1432 Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. The undersigned makes application as follows. Seeking a special permit to operate a dog daycare and boarding facility in the home. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 250 4.1 N. 4. The street address of the property is 1432 Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. Assessors map 140, parcel eight. The name and address of each legal height, each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Teresa R. Carlo of 1432 Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in the Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 8185, page 55, recorded September 2nd, 2014. They have answered the special permit question as follows. The question is, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, no, our family vehicles will be parked on the right side of the yard near the fence to give customers the full driveway to park when dropping off and picking up the dogs. The kennel will be cleaned every day and disposed of in a plastic bag, then put in a barrel that locks. On Fridays, it will be put out in a Lunenburg trash bag and put out front for town pickup. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, no, a stockade fence will be put up on the neighbor's side of the kennel to block any view of the dogs. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if an open use? The reply, yes, the dogs will either be in the house or kennel at all times. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, no, if the dogs are barking outside, they will be brought inside the house immediately. There's a letter in the application. I, Donna Carlo, would like to apply for a permit to open a dog daycare at 1432 Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. The house is located on almost two acres of land. The most amount of dogs will be eight dogs at a time. Hours are open from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. The dogs are allowed in any room of the house on the first floor. They will also be taken out four times a day with a 30-minute walk in the field and the backyard each day. There will also be a kennel 20 by 16 located behind the garage to get fresh air a few times a day, weather permitting. Attached are the rules for my customer. Thank you, Donna Carlo. And that's signed August 20th, 2019, by Donna L. Carlo. There's a field card attached from the assessors' office, a site plan showing the property location and the house with the fence. There's a application that is attached of the Carlo's Doggy Daycare. You don't want me to read that, right?
No.
There's a dog daycare agreement attached. Would you like me to read that?
Um.
I'll read that one.
All right.
The dog daycare contract agreement. I understand that I am solely responsible for any harm, injury, or damage caused by my dog while I, while they are attending Carlo's Doggy Daycare. I further understand that the owner, employee, and volunteers at Carlo's Doggy Daycare will not be liable for any problems which may occur, and I hereby release them of any liability of any kind whatsoever arising from my dog's attendance and participation at Carlo's Doggy Daycare. I further state that I am a legal owner of said dog and that the dog has not been exposed to rabies, distemper, kennel cough, or any other known contagious diseases within the last 30 days. Also attest that the dog is free of worms, hot worm, and fleas. If my dog becomes sick or injured, in the event of an emergency, I authorize the staff at Carlo's Doggy Daycare to contact my veterinarian or an emergency veterinarian if the circumstances are deemed necessary matters without liability, and the owner of the dog agrees to promptly pay for all medical treatments received. I hereby agree to the terms of this contract, and that is in effect stating, starting on the date below, and shall remain in effect for as long as the dog attends Carlo's Doggy Daycare. There's general rules and policies. Shall I read those?
Um, I think you should.
Okay. All dogs aged six months or older must be spayed or neutered. All dogs must have up-to-date vaccinations and submit written proof of rabies, distemper, and bordetella. All dogs must be in good health and free from any condition that could potentially jeopardize the rest of the dog's well-being. If your dog shows any signs that may be contagious, such as coughing, vomiting, diarrhea, internal parasites, or fleas, please do not bring them to daycare. All dogs must be friendly and non-aggressive toward any person or any other dogs. Please remember your pet will be spending time with other pets, and the safety and health of all animals are our biggest concerns. The hours are Monday through Friday, 6:30 to 6:30. Reservations are required, and ID, you must cancel a reservation. Please give us 24-hour notice, or it will be necessary to charge you for a full-day rate. A late fee will be charged for dogs left after 6:30. If you are more than 15 minutes late picking up your dog, you will be charged a late fee of $10 for every 15 minutes you are late. Please make sure that your dogs are on a leash at all times when coming and going to our daycare. Please label any dog food that you bring for us to feed your dogs during the day. To help us maintain an environment free from flea and ticks, we ask that you use some kind of flea and tick product to prevent them from being on your pets. And then there's a veterinarian information sheet that needs to be filled out as well, which I will not read. There's the assessors' field card, a list of abutters who were all noticed, notified more than two weeks ago, a site plan showing the property, and then the section of the bylaw that requires the applicants to be here. I also received a letter from the Lunenburg Board of Health Agent, James Gariffy. Lisa, I have reviewed the proposal for the doggy daycare. The applicant has provided steps to address the dog waste and barking. Given the proximity of their budding property and the lack of town water in the area, the Board of Health would like the ZBA to stress the importance of managing the dog's waste and barking. The Board of Health concerns are that walking areas and kennels must be kept away from wells. The animal waste is managed so it doesn't create an odor or fly nuisance, and that barking is managed so it doesn't become a noise issue, particularly given the proposed operating hours and kennel location to the abutter. The Board would like additional information on the kennel area. It is, is it a building or just a fenced area? The well for this house appears to be very close to the kennel area. Attaches a copy of the portion of the as-built septic system for 1432 Lancaster Ave., and it shows the wells, theirs and the abutters. The footprint of the house was expanded after the septic system was installed. And that's from Jim Gariffy. And then he provided a site plan showing the septic system and relation, and well in relationship to the property line. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, I did receive just a memo from the, the police chief. Lisa, I think the animal control should inspect the site before this permit was issued so we don't get neighbors complaining about the dog's barking. And that's signed by James Marino, Chief of Police. And that's all, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. Just, just a note, because I'll, I'll address that right now about the, their concern on the inspection by the animal control officer. If you go to section 4.6.3.1 under the, there is a section on a kennel. I'm not going to read the licensing part or the periods, but I'll just read that. The animal control officer inspected premises where the applicant's kennel will be located and determined if the premise is appropriate for use and size of the proposed kennel. The animal control officer will determine if the kennel provides adequate shelter, sanitary, and humane conditions. The animal control officer will keep detailed records of the kennel operation, will inspect the licensed kennel at least once a year and/or when a complaint is registered. All dogs shall be confined to the kennel and fenced outside runs or otherwise under suitable control. The kennel will have no significant adverse effects, such as excessive barking or other conditions, on the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. The kennel, including outside runs, shall comply to the setbacks as provided in Section 5, side and rear yards. This doesn't import. And for the purpose of this section, irrespective of Section 8 of this bylaw, the building official may seek the assistance of the animal control officer to enforce conditions of the permit. But I just wanted to address that one part. Okay. I would invite the applicants up to address the kennel and submit, uh... You have to give your name and address and...
Donna Carlo, 1432 Lancaster Avenue, Lunenburg, Massachusetts.
Okay. Do you have anything that you would like to add to what Lisa has read, or?
Just if the dogs are barking, we're going to bring them in immediately, so we won't want to listen to that either.
Okay. I think, I think there'll probably be some questions from, there is some dimensions missing on, on the application itself. I'd like to also try and clear those up. The kennel itself, I know, I believe you said 16 by 20 behind the garage. How big is the garage itself?
Uh, pretty good size, two-car garage. I don't know, but just after hearing what you just said, because I'm a little dropped in the well.
Well, is the 16 by 20, you want to take up the, the entire, is that the length of the garage?
Sure.
It's shorter, but you don't know by how much?
It's a good-sized garage, Mr. Chairman. I was here this afternoon, and it's probably 24 by 36. I mean, it's a good-sized garage.
Yeah, I know it was. I just wanted to see if we could put some dimensions on this.
Okay.
Some of the other have requested, and it really should have been.
Yeah.
But I thank you.
It's 896 square feet, 28 by 32.
It's close. Very good. So it's eight feet.
28 by 32.
28 by 32. Okay, so that does go a little. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, the dimensions will be the, the 16, you say 16 by 20. Is it 16 against the garage or 16 out from the garage? Which way is 16, which way is 20?
It goes this way, right?
The 16 is running 20 this way.
So 20 against the garage?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
How far away from the garage will that be? Or is it planned to be a budding to it? Would you come up to, please?
Yeah, and give your name and address, please.
Teresa Carlo, 1432 Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg, Mass. There'll be space for a walking space because there's a door that goes from the house through the garage right out to where the kennel door will be. But now that you mentioned there's, can't be close to the well, the well is over there. So we're going to have to move it over the other side of the house.
Oh. The well's in the front of the house.
Yeah, it's on the front. Uh, no, that's the side.
No.
No, it's in the back, back of the garage.
Yeah. It's right in that little corner.
Right.
So it's going to have to be moved over, which I showed you today, out that screen porch. So I'll put it out there.
Is that going to interfere with your swimming pool?
No. No.
I was there this morning.
Oh, were you?
I didn't walk around, I just drove by.
Oh, you should have come in. No, it won't. And eventually she might fence in the whole thing, so it just goes right from the porch out, so they can...
So the intent of the kennel fencing is to be a fenced-in area, is so you can let the dogs out in a semi-supervised situation?
Right. Right.
Is it going to be, is it, is it going to have cement? Is it going to be on cement? Is it going to be?
I think the posts on the side where I got it out of Lunenburg at somebody's house were cemented.
So it's only going to be like a fencing? Is it going to be sectioned off so you can put different dogs in different sections?
No, it wasn't.
So it's just going to be a wide-open?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I don't think she said she would put more than two in at a time.
Are there going to be any, like shelters, dog houses, anything like that?
There is a crate. We do have a crate.
Crate.
Like if some dogs are used to take a little nap in a crate, I mean, if they feel more comfortable. So that will be set up in the house, too.
Okay. Do you know, are there any, like, I know that, I just read what the Lunenburg Animal Control, do you know if there's any state, Massachusetts, regulations to kennels?
Mm-mm.
Not that you know of?
I know Donna talked to the dog officer. She spoke to her, and she's going to come out, I guess.
Yeah, she would have to.
Yeah.
She's here.
She is? Oh, yeah. Hi. Okay. Well, that's good, because we're going to invite her up.
Okay.
Okay, another thing, just, just on that, you're going to have, keep the dogs mainly in the house on the first floor?
There'll be, there'll be two rooms on the first floor, and then you can go through the kitchen into the other room, which goes out into the porch, the screen porch, which it's a shade from sun or rain or just to get fresh air. It's a big, you know, good-sized screen porch, and then they can go right out into the kennel. If they have to go to the bathroom, they could go out. So there'll be two designated rooms, a big family room and a, like a long bedroom that I showed you today.
That has the porch right off of it.
It has the porch right off of it, the screen porch, yeah. So they'll have two big rooms, plus the kitchen and...
Okay. And do you have animals yourself? I mean, you're going to...
I have a guinea pig and a bird.
Okay. You don't have any dogs or cats?
No. My mom, I lived with my mom for a while, and she had dogs. I've had dogs my whole life, horses, goats.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I have every...
We both had horses together, yeah.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I'm wondering, you know, sometimes people come in and say eight, but then they say, oh, I have three of my own, and I have...
Oh, yeah.
No, no, no. We don't have any dogs there.
No, a little guinea pig and a bird.
Okay. And are you, are both you, are you the total staff?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'll be helping her.
Yeah.
Okay. And is there any training that is needed for doing this? I mean, as far as...
I don't think so. I mean, I've, I've had pets my whole life. I've had two or three dogs at a time, and ferrets, and cats, and everything. But I did, I did see something online that was CPR for dogs. I did see that, that I might want to take, you can go to the Red Cross, I think it was.
Okay.
I'll have to look into that more.
Okay.
Maybe the ACO would know when she comes up, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to. That's kind of why I'm asking some of these questions, so when Cathy comes up, she can maybe...
Yeah, I did read that online, and I was looking everything up.
And you were saying you'll walk the dogs outside. What about on rainy days, snowy days, winter days, windy days?
Well, yeah, put in the screen house would be nice, so they could still get some fresh air, but, you know, walk them up, and I have a front farmer's porch, and you could walk them around, so they wouldn't get wet.
Yeah, plus we're going to snow blow around in the snow, so out there, they'd have, you know, be able to walk through the snow if it's deep, so we'll have a pathway.
Yeah, the whole kennel will be snowblowed, and plus part of the yard.
Okay. And I don't need to take all the time.
No, that's all right. You're doing great, yeah.
When you, when you feed dogs, I mean, when do you feed them? How do you feed them? I know that, you know, dogs, you can't, dogs are very protective of their food.
Yeah, I wouldn't feed them together, obviously.
So how, how would you do it?
We would separate them.
There's a, there's a gate. I'm going to put in like a half-door in the family room, so that when it was time for one of them to eat, they would come out in the kitchen. They should always eat alone. They should never be near their food and take it away until they're done, and two dogs shouldn't eat together. I've seen that. Separate, that's totally separate, yeah.
Did I see the owners provide the food for their own individual dogs?
Usually people want to, because, yeah, they don't want to change their diet. Yeah. My daughter brought her dog, her golden, to a doggy daycare in Chelmsford, and, you know, they would write out how much he ate, and if he didn't eat, and they'd give it back, just like a baby. Because they are people's babies.
I have a few more questions, but I'm going to actually see if anybody else would like to ask.
Okay. So now, I guess the question now goes back to, now that we've determined that it's going to be, so this is, the plan is to put the kennel area, well, the, the outside area over where the garden is now?
Mm-hmm.
Over where the gardens are now?
Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned a stockade fence for your neighbors. What's kind of fence will be in the, is it, is it the same fence that's, will be all the way around the kennel? Or what do you, what's your plans for fencing?
Well, the one we have is metal, but we may, are you still thinking you're going to do the stockade?
So what's the fence going to be to the street?
See, when we were putting it behind the garage, we were going to put a stockade fence that the...
So I guess it would be stockade.
The neighbors couldn't see over into the kennel.
Right.
But now we're putting it over the other side, so I'm going to have to stockade fence, like the, the front of the street, at least, for now.
Okay.
So it's not visible, dogs, and they don't get upset hearing all the cars and everything.
Okay. And the height for that fence that you're proposing?
Eight foot.
Okay. And I guess now the question would be, is now that I'm putting it out front, the dimensions, you're still going to be 16 by 20?
But I do, if I'm going to put it over there, I'm, I think next spring I'll, I'll enclose, I was telling Mr. Doherty, I'll, I'll enclose the whole, you know, other than the pool area. I'll enclose the whole thing, stockade fence.
Okay.
So for right now, it'll be 16 by 20 with a stockade running down the front. And I do have more kennel that somebody has just given me, so we can put more kennel if we needed it.
Okay, so how will that affect the camper on the side?
Oh.
So you, because, so if that's, if I'm going to put a stockade fence across the whole front, so blocking the driveway to the camper?
No, not with the, there's a driveway. Yeah, no, there's a driveway, because that's where we're going to park over there.
Okay.
So, and that's where probably it's been suggested I get a little dumpster for the...
The waste.
The waste, yeah. So I guess more than one person has said that to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've probably changed that from the trash to a dumpster.
Yeah. So we'll probably stick that over the side with some of the cars over there, and it would just be blocked off. There's a dip in the land, you noticed?
Yes.
So it'll go right before that dip. I have a garden there, it'll go right behind the garden.
Right.
Yeah, because that's where, I've had two fences there before, but they just rot out after years, but...
Okay, so the plan would be on the street side to have an eight-foot stockade fence, on the side facing, facing Stillman's would be, the plan for fencing there would be the same?
Yeah, by next spring.
By next spring?
Yeah.
The original plan, though, right now is to be, you know, say we granted this, when are you planning on opening?
Um, well, as soon as possible. As soon as we do advertising, and as soon as we're allowed to, and...
Obviously, you'd have to...
And then I have people, I have to get together to set up the kennel and...
Okay.
Do some things in the house.
So I'm just trying to understand the whole idea of the fencing. Is, is the kennel going to be completely stockade fence around it? Or is there, is there chain link? Is it chicken wire? I mean, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, chain link for now, and, and the stockade in the front.
Right.
On the street.
Right.
So the kennel off the fence, I mean, off the porch, so they can go right out, the dogs, into that.
And the, and the kennel fence is also, what's the height of that?
Oh gee, I stood right by it, but I'm about five feet tall.
And is it, is it over your height or under your height?
Yeah, it's over.
I think it's about six feet.
Okay.
Because I'm five feet.
Okay, I mean, the concern, obviously, is larger dogs jumping the fence.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, he had a pretty good-sized dog, the man I got it from.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And as far as overnight, is it, is there a certain limit on the number of dogs overnight? Or is it, you know, I can understand eight for the day, but is it, what's your plans for...
Yeah, I, I think maybe three or four overnight. I will have the two rooms set up, so, and they both have doors on them, so I'm going to try to make them half-doors.
Okay. Okay.
I always liked half-doors anyways.
Half-doors, yeah. So the plan would be only like, you know, is there a certain number for overnight?
Probably three to four. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So most of your clients would probably be working people. They just need somebody to babysit the dog during the day, and...
Yeah, and if they go away in the weekend.
Just be during the week and no weekends and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, if they go away in the weekend, if they want to.
Unless they went away, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it would be all at once. I don't know.
All right. And you'll have, like you said, you'll have the two rooms, you'll have individual sleeping containers for each dog at nighttime within the two rooms. They'll all be, they may be in the room together, but they'll all be in their own little container.
Yeah, and there'll be two rooms that they can go in and roam through the kitchen and, and, yeah, and I've put everything away, all any chemicals I put up on the shelf in the closet, and that's for the grandchildren anyways, but, so I don't have any of that around. I know...
It's like childproof in a house, pets alike.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, yeah.
Well, there were sometimes.
Okay. And so the, the main door for the business, is that going to be the front, through the farmer's porch, through the garage door?
Through the farmer's porch.
Through the farmer's porch. And there's a foyer there.
Okay. So this, if I'm looking at the picture, so it's not, there's like, there's like, you kinda have like two doors in the front, right?
Yeah, I don't use the middle door, that goes upstairs.
Okay, so the middle door would be the one closer to the garage, you're saying?
Yeah. No, that's the, that's the driveway, you go up the little stairs, and then right there's the door, right kinda near the garage.
Okay, so the animals would be basically walking completely through the house to get to...
Yeah, through the foyer, and through the kitchen, and have to greet them in the morning.
Right, because there's also a door, like, yeah, I wasn't sure if they're gonna use that door. All right. And you mentioned that the wintertime, that the, well, in adverse conditions, you're gonna use in the farmer's porch as an area for them?
Well, we can, you can walk them up and down if they look like they sat in a crate too long, if they take naps, if they're used to that, just take them out the screen porch, and it's all covered, and no snow ever gets on that porch.
I mean, it's, obviously, there's a concern because it's, you know, the busiest street in Lunenburg, that you're on.
Yeah, it never was. Jeez.
So that's, you know, it is a concern, you know, of the animals, and...
Yeah, yeah, no, we wouldn't want us to have anything to happen.
I'll let other questions go for a while, then I'll come back.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a procedural question, Mr. Chairman, I see we're quoting the new, have these been approved by the Attorney General yet? Do we know that they have? So they have been in effect?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be getting updated books at some point reflecting that. Okay, I just wasn't sure, just wanted to make sure that that was... All right, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else, any other questions? Okay, I'll go to parking. I know that you have the driveways that, you said you're gonna park in the right, how many cars do you have, are there two cars?
I have, I have one, two, three, and one parks over the side. So there's three cars, so we're all up to the front, so this half a circle is open.
Okay, a half circle.
There's a complete half a circle that's open, that you can come in, drop off, turn around.
Is there room to turn in there?
Yes.
In a half circle?
Yeah, I do it every day.
Are you gonna have drop-off hours and pick-up hours?
Um, I guess we could arrange that, well, it's really up to the person, I mean, when they wanna drop the dog off. If, you know, if somebody wanted to drop it off at 6:15, you know, we would say, yes, that's fine, instead of 6:30.
Okay.
It's reflexible.
Okay. Brings another question, you know, then, then your hour is, well, if somebody wants to pick it up at eight, that's okay, or seven.
Oh, no, that's not, no.
But I'm just saying, that doesn't combine you to the hours you stated you're gonna be...
Well, I guess, I mean, I guess if you, you know...
And, yeah, I'm just concerned, because then, then it becomes a bigger to the neighbors, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll stick to the hours, then.
And you're not gonna have any other services, grooming, bathing?
No.
One of the other things, you said you probably only have three to four dogs overnight. I know when I had my dog, trying to bring it to a kennel, you know, going away on weekends is when everybody wants to put their dog in kennels, and Friday, Saturday, Sunday night sometimes, and, so it seems like you would have, probably your busiest time would be weekends.
Really?
You don't see that?
Oh, I don't know, I, I mean, I know people who put their dogs in the kennel for the weekend, but I never really asked her how many.
Okay, well, I'm just stating that, most people, when they go away for weekends, they wanna put their dog in a kennel.
Yeah, yeah.
They're going on vacation for a week or two.
Yeah.
That's, you know, a lot of people do put them away other times, too.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it seems to be the peak periods.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people now, though, are, it's a different generation, like my daughter, they didn't wanna leave their pup dog home. I mean, we always had dogs when growing up, we left them home when we went to school, you know, it's like a new generation, they're like, they're babies, and they don't wanna leave these dogs by themselves. I might be wrong, but I just see a lot of it between with her and her friends.
Okay.
Yeah, people going to work, they feel bad leaving the dogs at home.
Okay, and, and, you know, of course, like, when, when I read, and Lisa read some of the things, the reason I'm asking a lot of these questions is because we do have to make those findings. And of course, one of them is doors, one of them is, you know, the outside, one of, you know, any odor, anything like this.
Yeah, definitely no.
Very, very concerning, especially in a, in a neighborhood, in a residential area.
Yeah, definitely no odor, that's picked up every day.
Okay, and, and just going back to the, to the, in the house, in the two, two rooms, if you did have eight dogs staying over, you know, generally dogs don't, you know, in a regular kennel, it seems like most dogs are separated for their night, but you're gonna have them grouped together.
Mm-hmm.
Which is also a little unusual. I don't know how they react together like that, but...
Yeah, well, I, well, I do have one crate so far, I've gotten from somebody, but we can set up crates. I mean, this one just flattens right down, so you can just open it up, and there's plenty of room in the house.
Okay, all right.
I know it's not like one of these in a, in a plaza, where they have two big rooms, and then there's like forty-five crates, I went to the one down the street, you know, but there's minimal place outside to walk on, except for rocks, I mean, I don't know what they do with their waste, but, you know.
Okay.
Try to make it a little bit more homier.
All right, any other questions?
So what is your plan for in case of emergency?
In case of emergency, I would...
You, I mean, a vehicle to transport?
Yes.
Have you worked with, do you have a certain vet that you would work with? Are you planning on taking it to the person's vet, or, you know, what is...
I'm planning on taking it to the person's vet, but I do have a vet, a Littleton vet, that I go to, or the Westford one that's open after hours, if it was on a weekend, because I brought my guinea pig there.
All right, so...
Yeah, so that's, so preferably, I would bring it right to theirs.
Okay.
And then I have somebody, you know, to be watching the rest of the dogs, and, or either one of us would drive, and my car's a Jeep, so it's a good size in the back.
So if you had maximum capacity of eight dogs all at once, and they were all inside the house, isn't that gonna be a little bit crowded if they're, or are you looking more for the toy dogs rather than the average to medium large dogs? Have you given any thought to that?
Well, the dog, the family room is pretty, pretty large, and, and then you have that other room, it's, what's the dimensions on the bedroom?
I don't know.
That is gonna be...
I would just say, I'm not good at measurement.
You do have a really big size first floor when you tie all the rooms together, there's a lot of, and if they're gonna break the dogs up into separate rooms, then there is gonna be their own cages.
And we do have the screen porch, and then...
And the Goodwiller.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even care if one of them slumped on the floor in my bedroom if they didn't, you know, they didn't get along with somebody else, and then won't sleep there.
They will be in cages in the house?
To go to bed, yeah. I do have one crate, but if I, if they were to stay over, I will just have to get more crates, if that's, unless they tell me their dog doesn't go in a crate. I don't know if they all do, my dogs never would, but...
Usually when you kennel your dog, it's...
They crate them.
You'd be in a crate, because...
As I asked her down the end of the road, and she does it every three hours, she crates them for naptime or something, she had like forty-five dogs in there.
Right, you don't want something stupid happening, so...
No.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess just an observation, I mean, as far as the smell, they're gonna be there, so they're gonna make sure it doesn't smell, and the same thing with the noise, they don't wanna get driven crazy by dogs, so I'm sure they're gonna be right on top of that situation also, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you.
So when you say that you folks will now park over on the other side, is there a separate driveway there?
Mm-hmm.
So there is a separate driveway already cut into the, from the road?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Anything else?
I'd just like to hear, I'd like to hear from the animal piece.
Yeah, and with that, I would like the animal control officer, Kathy, if she could come up.
Thank you.
And I just would like, you know, if you...
Have a little comment?
Kathy Como, Animal Control. The chief sent me here because he has concerns. Just from what I listened to just now, I have a little concern about the contract, first of all. Solely responsible by the owner, if you take dogs into your premises, and you have a business, you have to have liability insurance to cover yourself. Even, I have a, just for the dog officer job, and the town doesn't pay for it, I do, so that the town doesn't get sued. And I've been doing this job for forty-three years, and I don't know anybody that could ever open a place without having liability insurance. That's a problem I find with this contract. It's not, if a person brings a dog to your care, and you're taking care of it, you're responsible for what happens to it, no matter what. I mean, the one in Lemmonstir got closed down for that same reason, because the dog got out, got hit by a car, and they didn't get it medical attention right away, and the city closed him up. We have a daycare on the lakefront, and it's Lemmonstir, thank God, but it doesn't help me any, because when the dogs from Lunenburg go to that kennel, and there's been numerous dog fights and injuries, I have to go quarantine the dog in Lunenburg, so it causes me aggravation. I don't know anybody that could open and just have eight dogs in an area without having runs. They should have a separate run, that you can put them in if you need to, to go to the bathroom or whatever, and everything at my house is separated. You get in a, you have a dog getting in a fight, there's no stopping it, I mean, eight dogs, that when one dog gets into it, they're all gonna start. Preppy Pets on John Fitch Highway has had numerous injuries there, but they carry insurance. But my vet has somebody, like, every day from the, they got bit or something. It's, it's a dangerous situation.
So may I ask, though, is, when you mentioned the, mentioned the insurance, so it's liability insurance for the business?
Yes.
And that liability is that, you know, what happens to the dog, or what...
But it has to be a dog liability, I mean, they have to explain what they're doing, and they give you a special policy, and it's not cheap.
Right.
But you gotta carry it yearly.
Okay.
Cover you. The waste, I have a problem with, too, and I already told, I talked to her about it when I called her. I have a dumpster, I pay for a dumpster, for the town dogs, and I bag it every day, and it goes in the dumpster, and they come weekly and remove it. You can't just put it for the town, in town bags and have it picked up, that isn't the way it goes.
Right.
You have to have a dumpster.
Okay.
Also for the smell, okay? If she has more than three dogs on the property, whether they belong to her or not, I have to show a kennel license, I have to go there, and I have to decide it's okay. I've been by the property, the property's beautiful, and I think it would be a nice spot for a place like that, but it has to be done correctly. And if the, they have to have shelter, any dogs that are outside, there has to be shelter available, that's the state law, they have to have shelter.
And when you're saying a shelter, is that just...
Dog houses, whatever, something that they, a run, and a dog house, so they can go in, out of the weather.
Okay, so it's just not like a covered area?
Right.
You know, I was thinking, if they took the kennel, and if they put the fence in area, they had like something to cover it?
No.
So, okay.
All my kennels have dog houses in them, that's, that's the law, they have to have shelter. They can't just be brought outside or left outside, and I know they're gonna walk them and do all that, but sometime you can't, you gotta just put them out.
Right.
But you, they have to be separate, you have to have separation. In case of an emergency, and you gotta, and inside, too, she's gotta have kennels, she's gotta have crates, so she's gotta place to put every one of those dogs if something happens. Because, believe me, in forty-three years, I could write a book, it happens. So those are the things that, you know, they have to do better at, you know, to get it open. And then, I don't know about the neighbors, nobody's called me, but, you know, they have to make sure there's no barking, and, you know, because that's what the chief's worried about.
Right.
Because we get barking calls all the time.
Right.
So as far as the amount of space that they're proposing for eight dogs, I'm not asking...
I haven't, I haven't, I just went down to the house, nobody was home, I just saw, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Right.
I told the chief, I mean, and it's, it's out there, but there's a lot of neighbors, so I don't know, I mean, nobody, I don't know if anybody showed up, I think that lady over there is in about her, I don't know.
Okay.
But, you know, I haven't, I'm just listening to what's going on, and I don't agree with not having runs for those dogs, separate area for those dogs.
So, but is this sixteen by twenty area, twenty-four area, do you feel that's sufficient? Is that for eight dogs, or...
I'm not good at that, so I'd have to see how big it is, I...
One car garage.
Not for eight dogs.
Do you know what the size of a typical run is for a single dog?
It's, they should be six feet high, because if they're five feet, they're gonna go over.
Right.
And they have to be put in, so that, we had to dig under the ground, and put the chain link underground, and then cover it.
Oh, okay.
Because they dig out. In that road, I pick up dogs on that road all the time, they get hit by cars. So those are the things that the chief and I are wondering about, because the liability insurance is important.
Okay.
You can't expect the people to be liable for their dog when it's in your care.
So, so in your opinion, eight dogs, you need eight runs?
Yeah. Or at least even four, have a place to put them out, because they can also put some in the house if they develop a fight or something.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm grabbing dogs, you know, and I'm throwing them in the cage, I'm throwing them in the kennel, you know, to separate them.
Right.
Because when they're in that mode, you know, it's, I mean, I've been bit so many times from the stray dogs.
Right.
They're fine one minute, the next minute they're fighting, and you got blood everywhere, and the police, ask the police, they, I've had to call for the police to come, because I couldn't separate two pit bulls, you know? It's, and as far as size, I mean, you don't know who's gonna call to board their dog, and it's gonna be weekends.
Right.
Anybody that calls to board a dog, it's usually on the weekend, they wanna go away. Daycare is during the day.
Right.
But if they're gonna go away, they're gonna, they're gonna be going on the weekend. They might be going all week, but the weekend's gonna be included. So they gotta, you know, we gotta think of all that stuff. Other than that, I mean, I think they'd be fine, but they gotta do it right.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with it, and I, you know, I'm gonna have to be the one inspecting it, but, I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property, but they just gotta put the money out there and do it right.
Right.
It'll come back to them, but they gotta do it right.
Okay.
That's why the chief's concerned.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That, I'm gonna open this up to the public, would you like to come up to speak? Come up to the, give your name and address?
Lisa Graham, at fourteen thirty-six Lancaster Ave, the Abudding property. The only concern that we have is the barking, I've, I don't know how you control that. It may not be that bad, but I just wanted to put that out as a concern. Other than that, you know, as long as the dog officer and everybody else is happy with it, we don't really have an issue.
You, when you're in Abudding, are you, the house behind?
Yes.
Yeah, that's kinda where it's...
So we're, we're very close.
Yes, you are, I agree.
So we're actually putting it towards the front, on the right side?
Is better for us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's much better. Yeah, and the safety of the animals, you know, we'd be concerned with, but...
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Maybe we wanna invite the applicants back up, now that they've heard what the ACO had to say, and see if they're available to...
We, we can do that, but I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't feel they're ready to be...
Oh, right, no, I don't think they realize exactly what they needed to do to be ready.
Exactly, and, so, you know, wishes of the board, I mean, I'll accept the motion if somebody makes it.
I was gonna recommend that we give them a continuance without prejudice.
Well, we don't have to give it, we can give them a continuance, or we can let them withdraw without prejudice.
All right. And allow them to go out and research more, and put things down on paper more of exactly what they want, with the ideas that they've heard, what the control officer has said, and the need for runs, and thinking more of what they would need or should have in their house to not put themselves in peril, and so forth. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, yeah, you may come back up.
I guess the first thing is, I do know about the liability, I have an insurance person, and he's gonna put that on the house, so I do know about that.
Okay.
That, that, those rules, or the contract, actually came from a different person in business, so I just assumed that that was appropriate, because they're already running a business, you know?
Well, so, so the, basically, you could have that, but what the, what the, my understanding from what the animal control officer mentioned, was that you still need liability, you know, in other words, it, you know, you need that liability insurance, insurance to be running the kennel. I think really the concern with, what we have, a lot of what I'm understanding, is[1661.02] I think really the concern with, what we have, a lot of what I'm understanding, is more of a better description with dimensions of what you would be doing for the exterior for the dogs. You know, if there was, the dogs were inside, that'd be one thing, but it's, it's, you know, you need to have a runs, you know, we've, we've heard that, that you need to have runs, you need to have things, and so we would need, I, I personally be looking for a better description of what that exterior area would be looking at, like the dimensions of it, what you were using for fencing, how you propose to do it and things like that, so that everybody can, including the animal control officer, can make a better determination as to your preparedness to have a kennel.
Okay, so what is your suggestion for eight dogs then? Two to a kennel?
I don't, I don't think that, we're, we can't tell you how to do this.
Right.
All I can tell you is, right now, you need to do a lot of homework. Um, you're, you're not really prepared for this at this point. Um, I think you heard what the, the dog officer said. Uh, to be honest with you, if, if it came to a motion tonight, I wouldn't be in favor of it, based on what I saw, based on the information, because a lot of it's lacking. So, um, I think what, and I think what the rest of the board is, is probably in agreement with that. Um, what I would suggest is, you know, we can continue it, but I, I think you, who knows how much time you, you need to do all of this. I would, um, also let you withdraw without prejudice and I think we could let them come back without a fee. Is that correct? And we could let, you know, and that would give you, what you would do is you would just do your homework, come up with a real plan, come up with where the kennel is, the dimensions of the kennel, what the fencing is, how, you know, that it complies, you know, with being underground, being that six feet in height, all the setbacks from, from yards, all of that, because that's not on the thing either, 'cause, but we're just gonna make sure you're in compliance with everything. Um, go through and, and do, do your runs, your separate areas, whatever, all the homework you need to do, put it all together and then you could just reapply and come back to the board.
Okay. Does it have to go out to notice to the town again and all?
It would have to, yes.
So it's another month?
Uh-huh.
So it would be another month?
Uh, it would really be how quickly you can get all of this done, but I can tell you right now, our next hearing is completely booked.
Hmm.
Um, so I think that right now, even if we continued it, it would be at least four, at least a month. Um, so either way, if you'd like us to continue it and schedule it for the next available hearing date to a time and place certain, we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you would prefer?
Do you understand what it means to withdraw without prejudice?
No.
Well, I mean, it...
It would, it would take the onus away from us as far as requiring a date for you to have everything. This gives you plenty of time to do research, talk with other people that own kennels, talk with the officer, talk with your veterinarians.
I think if you also talk to the dog officer and, and, she's got a lot of information and I believe she'd be more than happy to share that. Um, but at this point, I just don't feel that we have enough in front of us.
Okay, and, and it's basically because of the fencing of the dogs?
It's all the issues, I think.
The dog houses and how many go into a kennel?
You should come back, we should know what your insurance is, that you are covered, because as she said, if, uh, something happened, the, the town's not gonna be sued over it. You have to have the...
No, I did know that. I did know that, yeah.
But as long as, but, you know, you should come back with, with the whole package. And again, we can't tell you how to do it, that's, that's not what we can do. We have, again, as I said, we have certain findings that we need to make. Um, at this point, I couldn't, I couldn't, under at least two of our findings, I did, I couldn't find for you. I could not, because you're not in compliance with them from, with, from the, your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
So I really think if you work with, you know, some, again, with the animal control officer and, and get their input and, and, you know, do a little research and do your homework, put it together, and you may decide too that, you know, you gotta put all your costs together too, what it's gonna cost, where you're gonna put it. So that's all things you really need to address.
Yeah, that's gonna tell you whether this is economically feasible for you. What's it gonna cost to do the runs? What is it monthly for the dumpster? You know, what's the insurance rider gonna cost you? Then you might say, wow, I had no idea and it's a good idea, but maybe for us it won't work. We don't know that, but that's what we want you to try.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was just looking to, for you to tell me what exactly is wrong that I can fix.
Well, I think you heard a lot of that.
It's the kennels with the dogs.
Yes, the runs, and again, you know, we can't tell you what to do. It's not, it's not something we can do. We can tell you, you have to be, you know, you have to meet our findings, which are the four things that you answered, but if you read them carefully, you know, odor, noise, safety, you know, all of those issues that we address under zoning, and then, then even if we pass it, you still have to do all these other things. It isn't like, okay, now you can go do what you want. No, you still gotta go through and the animal control officer still has to go and approve everything, as I had read in that one section, four, six, three, one. So it isn't like, you know, if we said tonight, okay, you can, you know, it's, no, you still can't do it. So you have to do this anyway. So I'm suggesting you do it and, uh, you know, again, continue to a date certain or withdraw without prejudice, whichever is your pleasure. Without, without prejud, withdrawing without prejudice just gives you more time, so that if, if you can't get it done by the time of our hearing, our next hearing or whatever, you can just file it whenever. You know, if it takes you longer to do it, you can just file, go just see Lisa again and just say, okay, we're back. We're ready.
Okay.
What are the financial implications between, uh, you know, a time certain versus a withdrawal? Do they have to re-notify?
No, they don't have to pay the fees again. We can waive the fees.
You don't have to notify the abutters again?
Do we have to notify the abutters because it is a, a different hearing?
And, and both of them you would have to notify the abutters?
Yeah, well, a continuance, no, because a continuance, we could just continue it tonight and, and they've already been notified, so they're either watching on TV or they came to the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the difference between the two.
Is the fees of, is the fee of notifying the abutters?
Right, the certified letters again to all the abutters.
And the, and the ad in the paper or whatever that was, right?
Right, right. So you could avoid that by coming back at a certain time, but to say if that certain time, you're not ready to go, well, you just wasted everybody's time, so...
Okay.
Which, would you like a continuance or...
Yeah.
A continuance?
With the fee taken out and then just come back at, you schedule it now or?
We can schedule, a continuance, we will schedule to a certain date now.
Okay.
So, yeah, but the continuance, you're committing to a date.
Right.
The other one, you are not committing to a date. You're saying, when I'm ready, I'll let everybody know?
Okay.
And it, yes, it will cost you another hundred dollars to do that, however, you have all the time that you ever would want. The continuance, you have to say to us, okay, I'm looking at, by, to have it done by this date.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's the whole thing. So, you know, it's a matter of how long it's gonna take you to work with the animal control officer, how long it's gonna take you to maybe, uh, find folks to get estimates on the fencing that you would have to do, the work you would have to do to make sure everything's in place and everything like that. If you feel you can get that done in two weeks, you know, you can make, set a date for sometime after that. If you feel like you need more time, you might wanna say, okay, I'll just do the hundred when I'm ready. Versus having a certain date today.
No, we could set a date. Set a date.
Okay.
And then I'll go to Lisa and bring the paperwork, the same as Donna signs out and do the whole thing?
Yeah, since we would have one on the tab.
Yes, you'd, you'd bring in the paperwork and everything else.
Bring the whole packet in again.
That's, well, the, the packet of what you, the, whatever, whatever additional information you wanna provide for us.
Okay, don't change the first packet.
You know, you...
You're gonna add to it.
Add to it.
Okay.
Um, the next date available, if you continue, is October twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Do we have anything scheduled at this time?
We have seven o'clock.
So we could schedule, now do you know what, is it gonna be along?
We can do seven thirty.
Okay, we could do it October twenty-fourth at seven thirty.
Okay.
Okay. So we will continue this hearing till October twenty-fourth at seven thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Good night.
And it, excuse me, one more thing. If you do get all of the data together, if you get all the paperwork, you get all the dimensions, everything that, you know, we're looking for, if you could submit that prior, try a week before the hearing to try and submit that to Lisa, so that we have time